Good evening. Sorry we're a little late. We had an executive session and this is our meeting for July 15th. We've already opened our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. And we'll begin with announcements. Do you have announcements, Stephen?
The plastic bag band goes into effect, I think, the 6th. There is an opportunity for businesses to request a six-month waiver which they get, which, so if you want to do that. There, I do want to just, and I'll talk a little more about this in Town Manager Report, but storm cleanup operations have gone very well. If people have debris issues that haven't been attended to, they should call the DPW. And if you guys want to mention the vision forum and the other thing.
Well, first of all, we do have a Town Manager's Reception. I believe that's...
It's the Thursday, 25th, at 2:00.
Thursday, 25th, at 2:00 to 3:30. Please go to the Community House and stop in and say goodbye to Stephen and thank him for his years of service.
That's BYOB, by the way.
Yeah, for your own good, yeah. And also, this is most likely going to be his last meeting tonight. So, thank you for all you've done for us over the years. We'll say that again on Thursday, but I hope you enjoy this last Select Board meeting with us. And then, Tom, do you want to talk about the Vision Forum?
Yes, well, as far as making sure we make a good choice for the next time, we are going to have a 2019 Vision Task Force meeting. We're going to have an open forum on Wednesday in this room, and that's at 7:00. And we're hoping to get as many folks to join us as possible. And we'll sort of look at what are the main concerns we're going to have in the future and what are the skill sets we're going to need for a Town Manager. We've had, we've had this set up with a five-person Select Board and a Town Manager for quite a few years now. And so, folks will have an idea about what, what has worked and what hasn't worked and what kind of skill sets we need. And we'll be lucky if we can get someone with as broad an amount of skills that Stephen has brought. So, hope to see you Wednesday night.
And also with announcements, I want to say sadly, we have lost Jim Russell. He was an important part of our town. He's, I think, Park Board for almost 30 years. He's really an important part of bringing Blinn tennis courts to where they were, back to their beautiful condition now. Been an important part of the Senior Center and building the new Adult Center down there. He also was very involved with our police dog, and was always there to support the police dog. He was a resident here in town who knew service above self. And he was, he's going to be sadly missed at all our town meetings because we always knew we would hear from Jim Russell, and he have a few wonderful comments for us. So, I wanted to let everyone know that we did lose Jim. Thank you.
And you'd always know where he was sitting.
Yes.
Because he had the colorful jackets on.
Yes. And now, we're ready for resident comments. Do we have resident comments for tonight?
Hi, Jamie Meadows, 209 Prynwood Road. So, a little less than two years ago, my wife and I moved into town. This is where we wanted to raise our family. We built a house at the end of Prynwood Road, and obviously, as you know, it's right by Long Meadow Country Club and right down the street from the proposed site of the metering station. This is extremely concerning to us. We have two young children. Juliana, my daughter, who's seven years old, is going to be a second grader at Wolf Swamp. And my little guy Jonathan is two and soon to be following in her footsteps at Wolf Swamp. What does this metering station mean to our community? What's it going to do to long-term health risks to our kids? The future of my children, I'm very concerned about. What's going to happen to our property values? There's no way that this is the ideal location for a metering station. So, I'm asking the Select Board, do what you can. Let's find another location. This is, this is not where it's supposed to be. It's not supposed to be in the middle of a residential neighborhood. It's not supposed to be a quarter mile from an elementary school. When we moved to town, we, we have a big family that's within a half a mile of this site. I have seven nieces and nephews. They all go to Wolf Swamp. I had two dear friends recently that my daughter went to school with, just sold their houses on Frank Smith Road, and two issues: the taxes and this metering station. So, even though a shovel hasn't been put in the ground, it's already affecting our community. And Mark, I know you know the Briggses.
Yep.
Mike Briggs just sold his house at 1083 Frank Smith. Taxes and the metering station. He wants no part of it. Same thing right next door. Doug and Jenna Farrow, their little girl Ella went to school at Wolf Swamp, and they've had enough. And it's, it's sad to see these families go. My wife and I are extremely concerned about what's this going to do to our community, to our neighborhood, to our kids' health. So, thank you for listening, and I'd love to see some action here.
Thank you. Any other residents?
Hi, Deborah Ceronek, 92 Arlington Road, longtime resident of Long Meadow. And I'm trusting the Select Board to put the interests of our health, our homes, and our families above the interests of utility companies such as Tennessee Oil and Columbia Gas. But to make sure my trust is not misplaced, I'd like to request that each member of the Select Board make public their position on the proposed metering station at the Long Meadow Country Club before any further votes are taken. I'm confused as to where each board member stands, and even more confused as to why any board member would vote to allow a known health hazard to be installed in a residential area. Thank you.
Good evening. Lori Robinson, 53 Warren Terrace. I've lived in this town for 35 years. I admit that before I joined the Long Meadow Pipeline Awareness Group last year, I never attended a Select Board meeting, and I never got involved in town political activities. I would say that I was unclear about the role of the Select Board. Therefore, perhaps the following comments are naive and maybe even unfair. But I want you to know that I am deeply disappointed by the way that the Select Board has approached the gas pipeline metering station and expansion project. I assume that the Select Board's key responsibilities include the health and welfare of Long Meadow residents. And on that score, I feel that with a few exceptions, you've not stepped up to do the job. After all the speak-outs and hearings, I know that we all now know about the health and safety issues presented by natural gas and the failing infrastructure. We, the residents of Long Meadow, have actually experienced some incidents of gas leaks, but thank goodness, there have been no dire outcomes. Maybe we've just been lucky so far. So, I ask you tonight, going forward, will you make every effort and take every action possible to protect the residents of Long Meadow? And if not you, who will? Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have a copy of this? Oh, yeah, definitely. She'll put it in the minutes. Thank you.
Members of the Select Board, my name is Jim Turtlot. I live at 64 Prynwood Road in Long Meadow. As most of us know, a gas processing and distribution facility to serve more than 50,000 customers is being planned on 2.4 acres at the intersection of Hazardville and Chayka Roads. It will double the capacity of Columbia Gas and be the first industrial use in the town of Long Meadow. We're all concerned about the safety, the health, and climate change issues that are involved with this. In short, this is a big deal. It's a big deal for the town. Therefore, as leaders, you have a duty to learn the risks involved and to make your positions known to the public. This is especially true in the wake of the confusion surrounding the 61B referendum question involving the town's purchase of this site. Regardless of the gas company's assurances, which are sure to come, this is dangerous stuff. And handling it is subject to human error. We all know that from enough examples nationwide, not only our own experience as Massachusetts residents with the Merrimack Valley. For those of you who are in the know, that error was human error that began in The Long Meadow Pipeline Awareness Group has learned a lot about this subject. But if the town is to be effective in the hearings that the Department of Public Utilities, the Massachusetts Department of Public Utilities, will hold, it must be led by the Select Board. Therefore, let us develop a common understanding of this problem. Let us start a public dialogue between those residents who have studied the problem and the Select Board. Please work with the Long Meadow Pipeline Awareness Group to arrange dialogue sessions as soon as possible. Thank you all.
Good evening. My name is Michelle Morantz, and I live at 117 Rugby Road. I'm speaking tonight as a resident and as Chair of the Long Meadow Pipeline Awareness Group. My purpose this evening is to comment on the Chapter 61 vote taken at last week's special Select Board meeting, as well as to ask about future actions that the Select Board may take regarding the Long Meadow Meter Station and Pipeline Project. As you might remember, I participated in a speak-out after our June Town Election to point out that the more than two-to-one vote in favor of Question Two was evidence of widespread concern regarding the building of a meter station in a Long Meadow residential neighborhood. At that time, I also asked that this decisive voter statement motivate the Select Board to be transparent in any future decisions attached to the meter station project. Imagine my confusion then, when I learned about last Wednesday's special Select Board meeting, hours after it was held, to vote on the future of Question Two. No member of the Pipeline Awareness Group had been called before the meeting and apprised of the proposed motion, nor was the rationale for the majority vote that evening clarified for us until two days after the vote. It should come as no surprise that our members were shocked, disappointed, and angered by the vote against pursuing the Chapter 61 initiative, particularly since we worked so hard at your behest to generate support for Question Two. Despite this failure to communicate, however, I believe that the Select Board can do better with informing the Long Meadow community, especially if your future efforts are based on common courtesy and the realization that our residents have a right to be informed. After all, you do work for us. So, I'm here once again to request transparency. Right now, residents would like to know where each of you stands on the metering station issue and why you've taken that position. If you're not opposed to it, we'd like to know your reasons. Perhaps you believe that a meter station and high-powered gas pipeline will not pose a danger to home dwellers and schoolchildren. If you are opposed, however, we'd like to know how willing you are to act on that opposition. What actions are you prepared to take? Do you have a strategy with goals and specific, time-bound objectives? Will you, for example, generate periodic status reports that can be shared with the community? Some residents are concerned that Select Board members will simply accept the Tennessee Gas proposal without a robust effort to challenge it. If that is not your position, how can those residents be assured that any Select Board effort at accommodation will truly be a decision of last resort, only invoked after a robust effort has been made to pursue all challenges available to us? Finally, for over a year, Pipeline Awareness Group members have used speak-outs to ask the Select Board to hold a community-wide meeting that would educate residents about the meter station project. So far, these requests have gone unheeded. Please understand that holding such an information session would be a real step forward in convincing residents that you care about addressing their concerns. With its sole participants consisting of Select Board and Pipeline Group members discussing background information and actions taken, a community forum could be televised to a broad audience. Such an information session would indeed go a long way toward creating goodwill and provide much-needed evidence of a policy of transparency that would ease the anxiety that many residents currently hold regarding your intentions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other? No? Okay.
For the record, I'd like to make one comment. We've heard a lot of reference here about transparency. For the people out in television land, our meetings are posted. They're on the website. They're televised, and the results are put out. So, there is transparency. I don't know...
Can I respond to that?
No, it's not, not your turn. You already had your say.
All right.
But there is complete transparency. We've voted on issues that...
You must be violated at the open forum.
He cannot interfere when he's having his comments. He didn't interrupt you.
So, to, to any assumption that's being presented in comments that this board is doing something behind the scenes is totally false. Everything is in the open, open for public consumption unless it's executive material, which is kept confidential for our negotiations. That's all I have, Mary.
Any other Select Board comments in general or regards this issue? No, it's level.
Well, I was going to make a comment, but I...
That's right. Now, this is Select Board comments times.
Okay, so, but yes, I, you know, I got the message, and I will prepare a statement personally. But I think I've been open with the folks in the Pipeline Group about where I stand on this. I think I, I know I've spoken to several of you in phone conversations or in person and met with people. So, but I guess the, the point I really wanted to make was that this is Stephen's last meeting. Unfortunately, I am going to be canoeing in Minnesota all next week, part of my mental health plan. And so, I won't be here for the event. But I just want to say that it's been, you know, four years, I guess, I've been working with you. And, you know, in the beginning, the first time I met you, I said, "Well, Stephen Crane seems like a pretty sharp guy," you know. I said, "Okay." And you were kind of, you know, started telling me about stuff, but saying, you know, "I hope you know what you're getting into." And, you know, when I came on the board, it was really, I was glad to see that the tension that was here just sort of slowly disappeared more and more. And I think, you know, you deserve that reaction because you really do have a genuine concern to give 100%. And I'm sure that's what Concord saw in you. You always give 100%. Sometimes, a question would come up, and I could see the wheels spinning, and then all of a sudden, boom, would come out, and you'd have a great answer. You know, you're, again, the thing I liked the most was at-town meetings. And we always had some section, some question where people were like, "What is going on?" And, "Get the Town Manager up here." And you always said something that could make the Select Board feel comfortable, you know. You didn't always have the right answer, but there is no right answer. Sometimes, it's, it's really a question of personal preference. And those are the hardest situations. Sometimes, it's easy. We say, "Well, this is safe. This is unsafe. This is right. This is wrong." And then, sometimes, it's personal preference. And, you know, no one can, can deal with that. But, but you have a great knowledge base to do this work. And I really, I wish you luck. I hope our paths cross again in the future. And, you know, just thank you for all your, your work. I know it's not been an easy time here, but, but I think you've earned something. And for those of you who don't know, I think the job in Concord is probably one of the plum jobs in the whole state. And I think you definitely have earned that. And I hope you stay there 20, 25 years.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other Select Board comments? Okay, we're...
I'm sure, person, is it appropriate for us to, in fact, rebuttal the comments of Mr. Foster, which were out of line and not representative of what was said here? We're looking for dialogue.
Yeah.
We're looking for discussion. We're not, nobody was accusing anyone of anything, whether those accusations would be warranted or not.
Okay. Thank you. All right. So, we're moving now to Town Manager Reports?
Unfortunately, not much of a written report. I did spend some time this week updating what we have for our shared work plan, which identifies, this is a result of a prioritization exercise I went through with the department heads, trying to figure out what things really need to be worked on prior to my departure, and what things would just need to be held off for either the interim or a new permanent Town Manager. Some of the things we're going to talk about today, or we'll be talking about later in the agenda. But we've made some great progress on some of these things. We have broken ground on the Adult Center. And actually, in a very nice ceremony that was very well-attended, and I think, you know, I think people really, it was a great day, and people really feel the kind of special energy that that new center is going to have. It hasn't even started, we haven't even started digging yet, and you can already feel the anticipation and the energy for that center, and that's going to be, I am sorry, I'm going to miss that. I think it's going to be really a first-class facility, both from a, you know, construction, structural standpoint, but also from a programmatic standpoint. As you know, we're, we're working on the collective bargaining issues. Westcom, they have hired, we've hired some dispatch, well, the City of Chickapi is funding this part of it because they're going to replace the Chickapi sworn officers who are currently dispatching, but that process has been underway. They, we got a really phenomenal number of applicants. One of the things that we, we tried to do is we did comparable analysis of area wages for dispatchers, and we wanted to make sure that our range was something that would be attractive. And, you know, unlike what we're finding with our own public safety positions in Long Meadow, we, we got a very, very healthy response rate. In fact, a number of the dispatchers that we're going to hire don't need to go through the certification process. And that's very time-consuming. So, new, new equipment continues to be purchased and installed. We're working on a transition plan that will be probably in the next packet, I would imagine. Where, Aaron Hastings, our Executive Director, has, has compiled a fairly comprehensive draft. So, I think we are on track to start taking calls in, in Westcom in October. And that's exciting. It's going to be a great, great investment. I'm sure it'll have some kind of administrative headaches for Aaron and as we kind of build this new organization, because the way the state grant rules are structured, it makes it pretty, you know, we've been talking about this for a number of years. It makes it difficult to kind of do things seamlessly, but we've gotten through it. And I also strongly believe that we will get more towns fairly quickly. The Shared Health Services Agreement, we've kind of put that on hold. I, quite frankly, haven't had a chance to reconnect with Denise Menard from East Long Meadow. I need to do that. We did hear the concerns of the Board of Health. I've discussed those in further with Beverly Hershorn. I still think they, I don't think they objected to the concept at all. I think it was more the uncertainty about how it would be implemented. So, I hope the Board will continue to, to express interest in that and see that as an opportunity for efficiency and, you know, better service for the same, or, you know, hopefully, less We are going to have an electric vehicle charging station. I think they've started dig-safing that, so that'll be kind of exciting, to get that going. And we'll talk, the master, Wolf Swamp master plan, I will report that the, the town meeting, the Amendment on Town Meeting Florida had baseball, or really kind of destabilized the entire project and really kind of threw a wrench in the works that is going to make the project either more expensive or less effective. And so, our designer, we went back to our designer and asked them to try and see if they could figure it out. Unfortunately, they're behind in other work as well. And so, it's, it's just been delayed just by availability of our, of our engineer. Streetlights, we'll talk about in a little bit. DPW Construction, no real report on that. Things have been kind of moving along. Like I said, they're doing drainage work and some of the underground stuff. And hopefully, Wednesday morning, we'll meet again and get some, some good news. And that's about it for the big stuff for me.
Okay. Any questions? All right. I added a thing called Chair Report, just to talk about some of the things that I've attended and things that might come up, so there's complete communication with the Board. I did attend a MVP. Remember, we, we're now Municipal Vulnerability Plan was put together, and I went down to Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. Chief Dearborn was also there, and Mark Strange was there for AGMOM. It was packed. A lot of people, the Pipeline, were there. And because we had the, who was she? The, what's her name?
She's the Kathleen Theoridis.
And she's the...
I watched that. She's the Secretary of Energy and...
That was it, yeah. And she was there to talk about a new bill that's coming up, where they're going to be putting a trust fund together, so we'll have, be able to get funding for our projects over multiple years, which will be very huge. And the way they're funding that is through an increased transfer tax on sales of homes. That's still Senate Bill 10, I think. So, they're looking for support from it. And then, people were talking about climate change and our energy conservation projects and how we can try to do things across the town lines in regards, oh, yeah.
I'm sorry, Mary. I meant, forgot to talk about storm cleanup in my Town Manager Report.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
I kind of slipped, because it, the MVP thing, I know it was, it was, sometimes in big events like that, we try and use humor to, you know, break the tension of something. So, when I saw Chief Dearborn in the midst of all this, I was chanting, "MVP, MVP," because the impacts of that microburst are exactly what we're talking about for the MVP program. We talk about trees, bugs, and water. And when you look about, look at tree damage that had, some trees that were perfectly healthy uprooted, but then you'll see other trees that had been previously damaged by infestation. And then, of course, you know, the water was overwhelming at the peak of the storm. I was actually just driving back into town right as it was happening, and it was like Jurassic Park, trying to, you know, get through. So, one of the things, a few things that happened, and the first and most important thing is, once again, the Town of Long Meadow employees specifically, I mean, there are a lot of people who are a part of this, but I want to specifically mention DPW Director Mario Mazza and Fire Chief John Dearborn, who answered the call and were there for very long hours over the weekend, working on, you know, assisting with the, developing the communication plan, coming up with strategies for handling debris, making sure we had cost control and cost monitoring provisions in place, because at the time, we thought we were going to need to probably pursue funding from MEMA or from another state agency. And also, answering the calls, getting out, opening, having the on-call guys come out, opening the streets with the bucket loads so people could get back to their homes, assessing damage, even as the winds were still blowing, getting out, driving around town, seeing what was happening. And all those things were very important in, in the fact that they fed the decision-making and the decisions that were made and the communications that we, the communication methods and the messages that we used, I think, and seeing the results of how quickly the community really bounced back and cleaned itself up, really are, you know, incontrovertible evidence that it, that how we handled that was a total success. Not perfect, but highly successful in that many, most people knew what was going on. They knew what to do. They, they checked the website, or they checked Facebook. They saw if they were in the area or not. They, they brought their brush to Wolf Swamp Field, or they had private contractors come clean it up, or they dragged, the people in the area were dragging it to the, the next Sunday morning, dragging it to the street the next day. Our guys in Northern Tree Service are a vendor who really is, was a kind of a integral partner on this. We're out there all day Sunday and Monday and days following. In the end, we estimate our municipal cleanup costs to be about $250,000, which is, you know, I think we'd rather not have to have spent that money. But we were looking at potentially $750,000 when we first started. And, you know, the fact that it was so low and the community cleaned up so quickly was really, like I said, in part, a result of tremendous effort by town departments, but also a tremendous effort by Long Meadow residents who really, you know, really showed that they want to keep their community in good repair. And it was, you know, it was, it was a pretty big deal. It was a very brief event. I will say, my street got hit the hardest, and so, as, because I'm leaving, you know, having branches all over my for-sale sign was kind of a bad look when you're trying to sell your house. But, you know, it really was an honor to be a part of that team. And I want to commend the departments and the Select Board. commend the departments and the Select Board, who came out on Sunday to have a special meeting to declare the state of emergency, which was going to be essential for helping us manage our resources. And so, it was not an insignificant event, and everyone involved responded so admirably, and I just really, I'm really proud to have been a part of that.
And Paul, did you have a follow-up on that? We got a letter?
We did get a letter from the Department of Revenue. Part of the process in declaring an emergency also has to be, has to be approved by the Department of Revenue, and sent them, sent in the information that they required in order for us to deficit spend. I sent out the authorization today that we did get approval from the Department of Revenue, so we're all set in that regard. And now, depending on the cost, the actual cost incurred, which we'll probably have wrapped up within the next couple of weeks, I'll submit to the Select Board some type of financing plan for that. It may all just come out of free cash initially, if it's a quarter of a million dollars, but we would have FY '20 and FY '21, and actually, to make the payments, so see what we can do with the financing to keep it, no impact to the operating budget.
So, you're saying MIPA, there's no chance of, or MMA insurance coming through or anything?
There may be some, there may be some claim stuff from MIA. It depends on a lot of variables. I mean, people submit the claims, we send them to MIA, and that's really the end of our involvement in it. In terms of going to the state, they're really, we did meet thresholds for natural disasters that usually get funding, and I think because we were able to contain the costs so effectively, you know, save it for when you really need it. Save the request for when you really need it, I think is what's kind of the discussion we had internally about not, not asking for it at that level.
Well, they're right at $250,000. It's a good call.
Yeah.
Tom?
So, yeah, the, I'm glad you brought it up, because I did want to mention a couple of things. And you're right. I mean, happening on a Saturday at 5:00, and then Monday, you could drive through town, and there's no problem. It really is, that's the way it's supposed to work, right? That's the way it's supposed to work. But one of the things that happened, and I was driving through town, and I ended up going down Hazardville Road, and there was a lake there. It was unbelievable. The water was almost as high as this table. And I guess I'd like to make a request. I don't know, I know you don't like us to contact DPW directly, but I think DPW has to look into that drainage area. I know, I spoke to a resident about it, and they said it was like this in the past, and then they did some work and it got better, and now they did the additional work, and it's not any better now. It's almost gone backwards. And that's the area that had that sinkhole that was so dangerous a few years ago, where an individual died in town. But it's, obviously, there's some major drainage issues that maybe we can use some of the funds from that resource, from our enterprise fund, for the sewers and drainage. But, yeah, that was a big hazard, and it's a big through street. Luckily, there are some higher streets behind there, but, so I don't know if there's anything I should follow up, or if I could just...
No, we'll take a look at it. I mean, I think that all, all streets got flooded for a brief amount of time, but I think when you look at how quickly the water receded, that is, that is the, really, if you want evidence about how our stormwater system is functioning, it's not the fact that it backed up, because it's built to a certain level of capacity, and that eventually exceeded that capacity for a short time. But within half an hour, the water had receded greatly, and so I think we, our system is in pretty good shape. The sewer line job that was done on Hazardville Road, it wasn't single, it was a sewer line, it was an excavation, but I hadn't really heard that, but I will check on it.
Thank you.
Yes.
Stephen, something you mentioned just clicked with me. So, I was reading the monthly reports. It's been months since we've had any status on the INI study, the infiltration study in the DPW, and that was originally going to be final report in November, and where does that INI study?
I have no idea.
Okay. Can we, we ought to just, because I think that's all part of the drainage system, I think. That'd be great to...
I think, one of the things that happened last summer was, it was a dry year.
No, no, I, yeah, I understand what it's gotten, but it's just that I recall that the study was supposedly due in November, and the report's just saying, "No action, no action," you know?
Yeah, I don't know. I'll check on it.
Any other comments for Stephen? Okay. Let's move on to, we have a visitor. Our interim town manager is here to be introduced, and a little bit of grilling. Come on up, Jay.
Grilling or love? Good evening.
You want to tell us a little bit, your name, and spell your name for our secretary, a little bit about your background?
No problem. My name is James C. Moynihan. I am a, have been in municipal government, state government, for over 30 years. I'm greatly appreciative of the opportunity to assist the community while the community goes out and gets a permanent town manager. I've had the opportunity to work in 11 different municipalities, including being responsible for starting up what was called the Circuit Rider Program for the state in the 1980s, in the very small communities, providing municipal assistance. So, in that case, had the opportunity to work in Franklin, in Berkshire Counties, Franklin County, for very small communities, where I was the only employee in the town hall, where the big issue at various points included who was going to pay for the oil while Mr. Moynihan was doing his work. Worked in, so that was New Salem, Northfield, Wendell, and Warwick. Program was successful. They, they picked it up themselves. I had worked for the state, took the program to Leverett, Chutesbury, and Sunderland. Then later, had the opportunity to work as the grants manager for the city of Springfield, and worked as Executive Secretary with the Board of Selectmen in Wilbraham. I've done work in the private sector, non-for-profit, and for the past, and also had the opportunity to serve as the, as a town administrator in Lanesboro. And then, for the last 23 years, I have been in the community of North Attleboro, first as its first town administrator, where I served for 10 and 1/2 years. And then, for the last 13 years, I've been the general manager of the municipal light plant in North Attleboro, responsible for the providing of electrical services and all the distribution system for the community of North Attleboro, which is about 30,000. And I retired in October of last year, and saw that there might be an opportunity to continue to serve in municipal government, and I'm appreciative of the opportunity for, for being here. So, that's my kind of overview of my professional. From an education standpoint, I have a bachelor's degree and an MBA from Western New England, and I also have a master's in public administration from the University of Pittsburgh Graduate School of Public International Affairs. I also participated in Harvard University's program for local executives. So, I'm looking forward to the opportunity to, to work with you all and to follow the fine job that Stephen has done, who has promised to clear up all the projects and everything before I show up, so that's great, and I appreciate that.
Any questions for our interim? Mark?
Jay, have you tried to set any kind of schedule yet, or have you any thoughts about what's kind of a schedule you might be here at?
Yeah, so I...
It's not 40 hours, I know that.
No. So, we talked about doing it for three days a week, about three days a week. So, right now, I was envisioning Monday, because that would also pick up your meetings in the evening, and then probably Wednesdays and Thursdays. But I certainly also will provide you with my phone number, obviously. And I'm happy to have conversations in between, or if I'm needed to come back, it's not a problem to me. That's fine. So, I'm looking forward to doing that. I'm off for a couple of weeks. We've talked about in September, but I've talked to Paul about that and communicating, and I think we'll be fine. And as I say, you know, I'm not, if I'm needed to be back here at a certain point, or he'd like to have a conversation on another day by phone, that's not difficult for me at all.
Any other questions? Did you get your email address all set up yet?
I did not, but I will when I'm, I think we are going to have the opportunity to come back, be back next week, having the opportunity to attend the department head meeting and also go over projects, kind of get an overview of status of that, and then I think we'll be ready to go. Not a problem.
So, so would that be the only day you'll interact with Stephen, like overlap, just Monday, or?
We've already met, talked a couple of times.
Okay.
And Monday, he's got a listing of various projects, and we'll do, go over an update of where we are on those. And then, I've also talked to, had the chance to talk to Paul, and we've also started trading emails back and forth, even on meetings and potential meetings and things like that that need to be worked on as we work our way through relative to preparing for your fiscal year 2020 budget, et cetera, et cetera, so.
Okay. And the times, you'll start, that Monday would be the first, like at the beginning of August?
July 29th, I think.
July 29th?
Yeah.
Okay. And then, what, you'll be here from 9 to 5, or do you know what?
8:15 to whatever the time starts, then I'll be here.
Full day?
Yeah, full day, absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely.
That's, thank you.
I figured you have enough to do to keep me occupied, so.
I just want to know where to find you.
No, no, absolutely.
I'll stop by some point.
No, no, absolutely. I get it. Not a problem.
Thank you.
I think, if you remember his resume, he's done a lot of building projects, and are two major building projects in town. He already attended remotely the, what was that, kickoff on the Adult Center?
Yeah, dude.
So, he could listen to and get to know all the parties, and he also has experience in capping landfills. He's done that before, and so we thought, oh, that sounds important.
We also completed, although it's different with your system, because you have an IOU or investor-owned utility, we did, last year, complete the installation of 2,000 LED streetlights. So, I'm happy to kind of familiarize myself with the IOU and their tariffs and their rates and requirements, but that was successful too. And it also involved a lot of work with the town relative to community outreach on the project and how it was progressing, so happy to talk about that.
Can I ask who you used?
So, in the case of the LED, I don't remember the contractor. What we did was, we did it through a consortium. We did an evaluation of various LED bulbs. We came to a conclusion which one worked with the town relative to what we saw as potential savings, and hired a contractor who installed the, stayed with pretty much the 50 watt at that point, replaced those, because there's other wattages that are more expensive as you work your way through. And then, worked with the town relative to where the contractor would be, and every week, we had a very strong, I'm not sure what your GIS system is, our system, we have developed in a way that we had all of the poles identified and all the lights and what was ever on it. In fact, we have photos of each one, except over 7,000 poles. And then, working with that, we were able to quickly identify what was on each pole so that we could plan a work. And then, what we did was, we had a map that each week we would update for the community so they would see where the work was being done, and so they could follow the progress. And it took probably four months to complete the work, four to five months to complete the work. We were fortunate with the weather that year, last year. Started in October, we were done by February. And then, there are a variety of issues after that, which we can talk about at some point on the LEDs, after you install them. But it's a great project, and we had very little difficulty from residents, but I think a lot of it was the outreach we did. We also did newsletter to the, to the community to let them know what was happening.
Thank you.
No problem.
I have a feeling you'll be replaced in that subcommittee, right?
No, please.
You weren't supposed to answer for me.
I'm sorry. My apologies.
Any other questions, Ron? Okay. Well, thank you very much for coming out.
Thanks so much.
We'll look forward to seeing you again.
Thank you. No problem. Thank you.
I wanted to bring up Solarize, so you wouldn't wait any longer. Thank you.
Stephen Moran, 117 Rugby Road. Finishing up with the Solarize Springfield Long Meadow program. You should be all very happy to know this was an extremely successful program, particularly for the town of Long Meadow. The numbers are 45. Residents' families' houses have decided to join the program. So, we have 45 installations that are going on in town as we speak. This would basically, this is 416 kilowatts of new electrical generation that is out of the grid. This is being generated by rooftop systems. One of the very interesting things about this, and very good, is that SolarFlare, the installer for the program, said if the communities reached 400 kilowatt system, 400 kilowatts as a total sales, they would donate a free system to the charity of our choice. And I know there was some skepticism early in the program by some folks who thought, well, wow, yeah, big deal, we're going to get this thing. Well, I believe that the Willie Ross School for the Deaf is going to be the beneficiary of a 5-kilowatt system. We're still working it out with them, but I think in terms of the nonprofit for Long Meadow, and actually, the greater community, which is not only Long Meadow that Willie Ross serves, I think it's a really excellent, it's a big bonus for how well the system, this program performed for the community. So, we had 416 for Long Meadow, there was obviously Springfield. Also had some systems put in. I, the support from the Springfield community was not as great as it was for Long Meadow, so basically, Long Meadow really carried the ball. What this really means from an environmental point of view, besides all the good economics for the people who have taken advantage of this, from the environmental point of view, this is the equivalent of taking 1,150 cars off the road, and it's the equivalent of planting almost 130,000 trees. So, from an environmental point of view, this is really, I would say, in terms of what we told the state we were going to do, 45 systems was definitely on the high side of what we said Long Meadow was going to produce, and we did it, and so extremely, extremely pleased with that. That's, that's the good news about the Solarize program, particularly thinking of the system for the Willie Ross School is sort of the icing on the cake. But I have to present some bad news. I got into this program, well, I got into it for the hat and the shirt, but I also got into this for my children and grandchildren. And the bad news is that for all the environmentally positives that this program has brought to Long Meadow and the planet, because in reality, what the Solarize program was, was really think locally, no, think globally, act locally. And that's what this was. This was, we were acting locally by doing it, but big picture is the planet. So, all the good stuff that we did will be basically negated if the Tennessee Gas and Columbia Gas Pipeline Expansion Project is permitted to happen, just like Solarize. This really is a case of thinking globally and acting locally. For us, there are at least four issues locally that we need to consider. One is safety, thinking Merrimack Valley. Remember, that problem had to be addressed and dealt with in Columbus, Ohio. You heard that earlier, home of our not-so-local Columbia Gas in Massachusetts. The second issue is health. The Mass Medical Society, over 100 boards of health, including our board of health in Long Meadow, and the healthcare providers against fracked gas. And make no mistake, the gas we get in this town is fracked, it's coming from Marcellus Field. Are all, have all asked the governor to have a moratorium on gas infrastructure expansion until negative health effects of natural gas are studied and resolved. Now, remember, these are the health experts in our state. The third issue is need. The metering station and the 200 PSI pipeline that's going to be created, which is an expansion of the 60 PSI pipeline that now is there, so this really is an expansion, is going to, is not going to Long Meadow. This is not going to affect one per... is not going to Long Meadow, this is not going to affect one person in Long Meadow, it's heading north through Springfield to communities who have no compelling need and who some would just don't want it. Holdeck North Hampton, for example, said, thanks, but no thanks. And the fourth issue is the impact on climate change. Natural gas's impact is significant, and it's significantly bad. Too much methane, and methane is a horrific greenhouse emission, is released along the entire distribution system from, out of the frack, out of the frack system to your house. Along the way, lots of methane has leaked into the system and into the air, and this is environmentally not the direction we want to go in. So, given the issues of safety, health, need, and climate, I urge this board, this board has been so supportive of the Solarize program, supportive enough so that two of you actually had site visits from our vendor, and one of you has decided to use, take advantage of the program, tech locally on this attempt to expand the fossil fuel infrastructure in Western Massachusetts, by doing your utmost to remove this project from a residential neighborhood, and ideally removing it altogether. Long Meadow delivered on the Solarize program and made a commitment as a green community. Long Meadow should not negate this significant step forward by acquiescing to an unneeded and unwanted fossil fuel expansion project. As a volunteer for the very successful environmentally and economically sound program for our community, this is my ask of you. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for all your work on a successful program, really appreciate it.
There is no doubt about it.
Thank you.
Any, any other questions about the whole program?
Yeah, I have a quick question. Steve, based on the success, what's the likelihood of this coming around again?
It, it can. It won't come around next year, the cycle, I think the applications have to be in like by June 1st of a year. And I actually think, there's something called Solarize Plus, and one of the things that we could have done is, we could have gone for electric charging stations, we could have also gone for the mini splits. And we thought about that, particularly the mini splits, but figuring, you know, let's not bite off more than a can shoot, so, but communities have gone back for the second bite of the apple, and so we could come back and do it again, say solar, you know, Solarize with mini splits.
What's mini splits?
Mini splits are, they're heat pumps, so.
Oh, okay.
They heat and cool, they're all run off electricity, so it's a perfect combination of, if you want to get off natural gas, this is a perfect combination of using electricity to generate your heat and cooling. And they've also, there was, the state does give some subsidies for that, but we figured, let's take one step at a time. So it can come back, somebody has to go ahead and do it again and submit the application to state, but that's, communities have done this, it's, the ones I've seen, the program started, I think, 2011, it's been three or four years and some communities went back a second time around, so it can come back, but not imminently.
And Steve, my understanding is the program was extended to the end of this month, in July, right?
No, at the, June 30, it was originally ending on May 31st, it was extended to June 30th.
To June 30th, okay.
Now, if somebody had a site visit and was still working on finances, et cetera, et cetera, I'm sure that, you know, special dispensation can be done, but by and large, for all the goodies and why this program was so significantly great in terms of dollars, forget the environmental stuff, it's as good as that is for dollars and cents, this price you're not going to see again for, you know, as the costs come down, you'll see it, but it won't see it for a while, but program's over.
Okay, thanks.
Well, as far as I know, it's over, so.
You mentioned another round, when would we have to apply?
You can apply next year, I mean, that's, as I said, the application, there's a state application, and the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission was very helpful in getting our application in, and I do want to, I, I want to thank, I want to thank Barbara and Manny Wenig, I want to say Stuart Crewman, and I want to say Bill Maury, they were, along with me, the volunteer community, volunteer committee for this, this community of Long Meadow, they did a great job, we all worked together to get, I think 45 was a pretty good number.
Wonderful, thank you again, and congratulations.
Thank you.
We have waiting also the, is it the building project, adult?
Yeah, Adam, Alessio from Colliers is here, I asked him to come to kind of, I sent out a plan this afternoon.
I did write copies of.
Yeah, if you don't have it, just to go, just to run through.
Yeah, why don't you give out the copies?
Yeah, I'll do that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, it's a little bit different from what you have.
Okay.
Thank you, as Stephen mentioned, my name's Adam Alessio, I work for Colliers International, we are the OPM for the adult center project. And so Stephen asked me to come here tonight just to go over briefly some of the safety logistics, site logistics for the upcoming project that we're, you know, getting ready to start, putting some equipment on the field in the next couple of days, so. I did hand out a couple plans here, they kind of relate to each other, one is a schedule, and the other is a site plan that kind of shows the phasing of that schedule. So we had a pre-construction meeting, as Marie mentioned, last Wednesday with the contractor, we met with Barry Jarvis, you know, a few other folks from town, as far as going over what the upcoming activities are, so, you know, as we know, there's a camp going on, there's the pool, there's the existing senior center, there's a lot of activity, and now we're starting this large project kind of in the middle of all that, so. We want to make sure that safety is our number one concern going into this project, and with that being said, we also have another meeting tomorrow morning with the contractor, with Barry Jarvis, to actually walk the site and go over this logistics plan, so make sure that everybody's on the same page, all the programs are aware of what's happening. I also spoke with Jim Layden today as well, and let him know of what's going on, so trying to just keep as many people as we can involved. We already have our construction weekly meetings that are going to start, not next week, but the following week, and we're going to have weekly meetings that we're going to go over everything, construction and safety is one of our, one of our topics on that agenda for every meeting. So, starting with the, the site layout plan that we have here, the entire area that we're going to encompass, which, with a construction fence, is going to be, it's kind of color-coded here, but you can kind of see where it outlines, it goes from blue to the orange and to the green and wraps around. So what we're going to start with first is the blue section that we have, and that fencing is going to begin on Thursday, the 17th. So Barry Jarvis, as I mentioned, is aware of this, so Salt Marsh is the site contractor, and W.J. Monford is the GC on the job, so they're going to be there starting on Thursday to set up that temporary fence. And that's going to take about a day or two, and then from there, we're going to start installing, there's going to be a temporary roadway, you can see kind of that yellow strip that comes through the left side of the page there. And so what we have to do is we have to clear some trees, we have to create a temporary roadway, and that roadway is going to lead to the existing pool parking, and so that's going to be for emergency vehicles only. So if there's an emergency, it's outside of the construction zone, they don't have to work their way through, it's a, it's a nice quick shot directly to the pool in case there ever was an emergency. There's going to be a few parking spots up there, but we're thinking that's mainly going to be for kind of a drop-off pickup type area, if there's anybody with disabilities or anybody needs to be close to the pool for a drop-off, that would be the ideal place to do it. And then the parking for the pool is going to be just outside the existing senior center, those are kind of marked off in the green there. And so the construction fence, the, the green, and I apologize when I, on a computer, these look like different colors, but now it's printed out, a lot of them kind of blend the same, but the darker green color is going to be the first phase of the construction fence on the left-hand side, so that's where the road access is going to be, and it kind of wraps around the back of the site and around the rest of the site. That's going to be phase one for the construction fence, and that's going to go until September 15th, and then once the pool closes, then we take that green and we move it over to where the orange is, and we're going to take up that entire site. Throughout the process, you know, the gates are going to be locked, you know, there's not going to be any access for anybody in there except construction workers, OPM, that's real, any unauthorized people are going to have to go through Colliers in order to get access to the site. We're also going to create a temporary walkway, and that's going to be one of the first things that we do, along with the temporary fence, that's going to come from the existing senior center parking lot, and there's kind of a green strip and kind of wraps around, so folks who do come and actually park, there will be a path that actually safely gets them to the pool as well. That's going to be about a six-foot wide path, so if they're strollers or kind of people passing each other, it's easy access for them. The exit and the entrance, so we're going to create a, an entrance which is coming right off of Maple Road, and that's where all the trucks are going to enter the site, so they're not going to come up the main driveway, but they will exit through there, so there's not going to be two lanes of heavy trucks coming and going through the site or through that driveway, it's just going to be them exiting. So there's going to be signs posting all around the, the construction fence as far as what's emergency entrance only, what's temporary parking, what's construction area, so it should be very identifiable as far as that aspect.
Yeah, Stephen, I got a quick question for you, are we going to cancel the veterans' race this year?
Mark.
Quick question, Adam.
Yep.
There's, there's a, at least one house, maybe a couple houses just to the west on Maple Road, of what provisions have we made to discuss this with them, review it with them, to make sure they understand what's going on in their side yard, backyard kind of thing?
Yeah, so as far as Colliers, we haven't had any communication, I don't know if the town has any communication with them at all. But we can, we can, I mean, there'll be some temporary fencing going up, but we can make sure that they are notified that this will hap, you know, this will be happening.
I think somebody ought to let them know what's going on in their side yards, and I don't know, I don't know the best way to do it, but.
No, that's a good point, absolutely.
Nothing else is common courtesy of.
Yep.
In fact, what you might want to do is invite them over to come talk to you folks or something.
Well, yeah, what I'd like to do is.
Invite yourself over to go talk to them.
Right, I'd like to introduce them, at least to the superintendent who's going to be on the job, if there is any immediate concerns that need to take place, you know, he's on site on a daily basis, he'll have my contact, you know, myself or our construction rep from Colliers will be there on a daily, on a daily basis as well, so.
You know, there's an issue also to the east, but there's far more of a buffer going to the east.
Yeah, we have the roadway.
Right, but going to the west, I mean, it's literally in their side yard.
Right, no, we can definitely take care of that.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Any other questions? I think what you've done here is great, maybe the neighbors having, being able to get copies of these.
Sure.
Also, are these going to be posted at the adult center or at Parks and Recs so people can actually see this?
Yeah, I did send them today over to Barry and to Jim, so they do have copies of these, they probably will know the best place to post these, so if there's any questions, like I mentioned, Jim and Barry both have my contact, and we're meeting with Barry in the morning for our walkthrough through the site, so if there's any questions that come up, she's always free to contact me.
Now, I see, you talk about when the temporary fencing goes in, when does Salt Marsh actually go and start digging?
So Salt Marsh, so they'll be on site setting up the fencing, and then, so the 24th is when they start to install the temporary gravel road, but they will be in there starting the 19th to start taking down some of those smaller trees that are by the tennis courts, so we won't be in that parking lot area or the shed until we take over that entire area.
And the, and the actual removal of the tennis courts begins after the 24th?
Yes, that's going to begin on the 30th.
So 30th is when major stuff will start?
Yeah, that's when we start taking down the tennis courts and then that, the little brick shed that's in there that has a couple bathrooms, that'll be taken down as well.
And are there signs out front that this is an active construction site?
Oh, yeah, absolutely, they'll all be posted on the construction fence, so everybody will be notified. Like I said, we do daily walkthroughs and looking at any safety concerns that we see.
And contact information, maybe on these sheets, if they put them on a poster board, so if someone has a question or concern, they could.
Sure.
Especially the neighbors, as Mark said, to be able to call you directly if they see something or they have concerns about something that's happening on the site.
Contact the town, they should really contact the town.
Contact the town.
The Colliers works for the town, the neighbors should really contact us, and we can usually answer most of the questions directly, but if it's something that they want to engage directly, we can certainly do that, but they should really contact the town for either Jim or Barry or me or whoever.
Or if they see something on the weekend concerning, they should just contact.
Sure.
Our emergency management, I guess, for safety issues. I really appreciate you bringing this in, I think it's unlike DPW, this is.
Yeah, it's a lot more complex as far as that aspect goes, as far as individuals involved.
And I appreciated all the work I could hear that was being done in that pre-planning meeting.
I appreciate that, thank you.
That you have that at the forefront.
Yeah.
We've been having these discussions for, even with what the design was finished, we were having these discussions about site planning.
Concerns, all right, that's it, oh, thank you very much for coming in.
Thank you very much, take care.
Yeah, I just had one question for Stephen, and now, is the summer camps, that all parents are aware what's going on, any changes?
I, I think Barry's been coordinating that communication with the campers.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Are you here for, no, okay. All right, why don't we move on to approval of minutes? July 1st meeting, is there a motion to approve the July 1st regular meeting?
No, motion to approve the July 1st regular meeting minutes.
Is there a second? Is there a second, okay, all those, and any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, and now the emergency meeting, that was the, when we had to declare the emergency, and is there a motion to approve the minutes of July 7th? Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, and all those in favor? And since we're, we just approved those minutes, I'm going to move down to remote participation because that's one of the first meetings we had, it was an emergency basis, so a lot of us were participating remotely. We have never, as a board, approved remote participation other than emergency issues, and I want to bring it up, do you?
We've never even approved it for emergencies.
But I think it's, isn't it a statute that when we have an emergency, we can order?
We never approved it.
I didn't, I didn't see that, but I did see, and I forwarded the guidebook, as it should have been in the packet. If you adopt it for one, you adopt it for all, and I know the intent was to adopt it for the school committee when the select board did it a few years ago, but the way the, the AG's guidebook reads, if you adopt it for one, everybody does it, boards can opt out, but the select board did not opt out of it.
Yeah, we did.
Yes, we did.
We did, we opted out of it. But we had to, there was a term to, when you, you have to have remote participation in order to function.
Why don't we just opt, why don't we just opt back into the provisions?
So I was going to say, I'm not worried about the emergency one, but we need to decide now, is there a motion to accept remote participation for the select board?
For emergency considerations or all?
I would, let's start with all. How do people feel about that?
The constraints are pretty specific, I won't say they're harsh, they're not necessarily harsh, but they're specific in terms of communication systems, what you have to have, and the, and the materials that have to be made available to the person participating remotely, and so it's, it's not necessarily, you know, anybody wants to just cause in.
No.
So it's not all that easy to do. I guess, the issue is, other than emergencies, has we, have we really come to a situation of having needed it? And the answer is not really, I mean, we've had times when there are only four people here and not five, I think there might be one meeting, last year there were three, but
I think when you adopt it, though, it's also if someone is bedridden for a prolonged period of time, then they can still maintain, I think that's what has been used in other boards.
Well, they, they've used it for purposes that was never intended for, because people who have been on vacation all summer long and using remote participation, which was never anticipated.
That's some.
It's not authorized.
Not authorized, it's just.
No, I'm thinking of other ones where, you know, the chair had a broken leg and he was still able to.
It's good to get rid of the chair, though.
I wouldn't mind that. So is there a feeling only for emergencies, or?
I guess I would lean in the direction of just for emergencies, especially if something like a snow emergency, it'd be great if we didn't have to stumble down to the center of town.
But the fact is that even in remote participation, a majority of the people must be present physically.
Yeah.
That's a requirement of remote participation, you cannot have a single person anchoring it or everybody participating remotely, that's part of the system. it or everybody participating remotely, that's part of the, the system. It clearly requires a majority, uh, you know, a quorum, in our case, a majority to participate in person.
So is there a motion for remote participation for emergency purposes only?
Yeah, I'll move that.
Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second that, and, and I guess the reason I would say only that we should use it sparingly is 'cause, you know, I was at that meeting, but for the first seven minutes, I wasn't connected. And so, that, for me, that just doesn't make sense to have a meeting where some people are there or not there, and it, it, obviously, you know, we're not, it was new, we're not that good at it, maybe we'll get better at it. But, um, yeah, I think for emergencies, you know, it could really be useful.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor? All right, thank you. All right, we'll go back up to the transfers on the raised crosswalk. Paul, do you wanna give us a report?
Uh, the finance committee voted not to authorize the transfer.
And do you wanna give us an update on what the latest, um, bid is? Cause we asked for a multiple bid and the bid, instead of going down, went.
Right, there, there were two bids received out of this, um, the last, um, attempt by the DPW superintendent, I know there was one that did not participate, the two bids came in at, I believe, thirty-eight-five and somewhere around forty-three thousand dollars, um, which was much higher than the original bid, um, that they got from the construct, um, from the contractor who had installed the, uh, who's installed the, uh, raised sidewalk of twenty-eight thousand dollars, but, um, like I said, the finance committee had voted them down, the vote was one-five, their concern was, um, it, it appears that the, um, the complaints about the raised sidewalk has softened, and they were also very much in favor of it, it is slowing down traffic and it, uh, it's serving its purpose in doing, in doing such.
So if we wanna go ahead and do this, we would have to transfer from the pavement?
We don't have to transfer from the pavement, you would just have to, Mario, know that that would, should be part of that pavement appropriation to make this correction now.
And the lowest bid is now?
Thirty-eight thousand five hundred.
Thirty-eight thousand five hundred, is there a, um, motion to take thirty-eight thousand five hundred from pavement?
No, I'm, I'm just gonna make a motion that we direct the, the DPW director to comply with our request to lower the, lower the, the raised crosswalk at Meriwether and, and Williams Street and pay for it out of available funds.
Direct the town manager.
Direct the town manager.
Yeah. All right, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Uh, any discussion on that?
Where are you taking the funds from?
I'd rather, I'd rather not be the one to say.
Well, if it's coming out of asphalt, then it's gonna make a difference, I'm not gonna vote to take it out of asphalt.
Well, I understand you won't, Richard.
I mean, it's ridiculous.
The fact is, though, our asphalt budget's nine-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars.
The fact is, we need four million.
And I get that, but, but we also need to lower this crosswalk.
Why?
Well, no.
Well, it's, it's built this way, man, it's.
Yeah, we went through it.
Yeah, we can't, you had to do it at resident comments, sorry.
The, uh, the, the finance may actually have a, I, I see it every day, you see it every day, I see it more than you do, cause I go in and out quite a bit. The only problem I can see with that crosswalk now is figuring out whether the person's gonna actually stop or slow down or go to full speed. That's the one problem I've noticed with it, it, to me, it's created, the whole concept of it being there has created a safety problem, from my perspective, cause you really never know if that person did, they come up full speed right to the last minute and put on the brakes, and then today, there was a lady went through there full speed. I have noticed, so generally speaking, ninety-nine point nine percent of the people slow down, but they're waiting till the last minute to do it. So consequently, you don't, you don't feel comfortable pulling out that interchange anymore.
Do you want me to see if there's elevated crash data there?
There, I haven't heard of any crashes.
Me neither.
No, there's been nothing, but it's, it's just the, it's just the thing of using it, you, like, you see the same thing.
Absolutely, I mean, my comments, and I said this to the finance committee earlier on, is my, my perception is that the number of complaints went down because there was a, a perception or a belief that the select board had voted to do something, something was gonna get done, and they're waiting for it to be done. Now, if we generally announce, well, nobody's gonna do anything about it, I suspect we're gonna, your people complain again now.
The, the truth is that the complaints went down once those flashy signs that have your speed limit on, that's when the complaints dropped off.
Yeah.
And, and I guess the question is, how much money did we spend on the flashy signs?
A couple of grand.
My concern is that, I think that we're being told it's thirty-eight, forty-five, cause we should've done this six months ago, and now, as I understood, Gomez left the area, they're saying, we don't wanna do the job, and they're charging us a ridiculous amount of money. I think we have to look for the next season and consider doing it in the spring, if there's still a problem.
Yeah, I think.
Doing it now at that amount of money is.
I think you could tie it into an existing contract next year and likely get a fairly decent bid price, cause you'd have mobilization with somebody in there.
How is, sorry?
Well, I just, I think that a reasonable person looking at that bump would say it shouldn't have never been built that high in the first place, and that it's a time bomb, it's just a matter of time till someone gets in a major crash there, and it, it's not gonna be a local person, it's gonna be an out-of-towner who's gonna go, what the heck is this? And they'll be in orbit, and there'll be in some big van with bad shocks, and they'll be bouncing down the street into somebody else, and, and I think, we've made a decision, I don't think we should change our decision, I think we should get it fixed as soon as we can, um, and that's all there is to it. It was a mistake in the beginning, and we, we can't let it stay there any longer, I just don't think it's worth it.
Are there any, are there any issues with, um, public safety vehicles?
The first week.
Only, only the first one. They only made that mistake one time. They're highly coachable, those guys. So to answer Mark's question, if you do it now, it's coming out of pavement, that's just the bottom line of that. If you do it in the spring, uh, there may be other, you know, accounts in DPW that are underspent or performing better or something, and then you could maybe do an internal transfer and take it from some places to pay for it, it would still come out of asphalt, cause it's asphalt work. Um, we could go to the fall, ask for the money from, from the fall town meeting, if you didn't want to, you take it out of asphalt, um, or you could, um, get, like I said, wait till the end of the next fiscal year and try and do the same thing that we tried to do this, this time, like I said, or just go, ask for free cash from the fall town meeting to do it. But if you do it now, it's, it's coming out of asphalt.
If, Marie, if we, if we've decided it's enough of a hazard to correct it, it needs to be corrected now and not say, well, we'll do it sometime in the future when we think the price is better. I mean, we made the mistake collectively as a, as a community.
You've said it, you've said it a couple of times. I had a question for you, Steven, if we do wait till the spring, is there a chance it's gonna go up in cost again?
Of course. I mean, you may get a better rate because you're bidding it in the winter, um, we're looking for quotes in the middle of the summer when they're busy, and that's always disadvantage, but asphalt will be more expensive next year than it is this year, um, you know, I really can't predict.
And so the other question is, when you do do this, um, how long is it gonna take to bring it down? And how much are we really talking bringing it down?
I don't, I think a few inches.
Probably, yeah.
Yeah, I don't think it was, I don't think it was, the reason why it's complicated and expensive is, um, the milling isn't just a flat milling, you have to, like, and I've learned this this year, you have to, like, adjust the miller, like, by hand while it's out there milling over a hump, and then same thing with the paver, it's, it's somewhat complicated, um, milling and paving, it's not just straight line.
Well, they're gonna have to readjust the curb and everything.
Yeah. Um, the other thing, and I, the other thing I would say is.
If they lower it, they're gonna have to adjust the curb.
It is net, a safety enhancement, it is not a hazard, and it was not a mistake, okay? Inconvenience isn't really that big a deal compared to pedestrian safety, and Mark, that's what we're talking about, is inconvenience, has been from the beginning, and so.
What was the damage to the ambulance, Steven? What was the damage to the ambulance?
No, that was a mistake because it wasn't, it wasn't marked that evening, um, but, and that was a mistake, and that was a hazard, but overall, the overstatement of all this is entirely unhelpful, it's not a hazard, it is a safety enhancement.
That's beyond the scope of this vote, really, the vote is whether we're gonna be spending, Paul, get it to me again?
Thirty-eight-five is the low bid.
Thirty-eight-five and having it done, and if we did vote, how soon would it be completed, do you think?
What did the quote say?
I don't, no, I don't know if it has any very.
Is it gonna be done in the next thirty days or?
I don't see where it says it's due.
It doesn't say.
Okay, so there's, we don't know when, but thirty-eight-five, so that's the motion on the floor.
I have one question, Steven, aside from the, from the ambulance mishap, has there been any recorded occurrences at that location?
Of municipal vehicles?
No, no, of all vehicles, if there, has there been any accidents or anything associated?
I don't, I, no one has brought one to my attention, I would like to think that that would come up at a staff meeting or something, uh, because this has been a hotly debated issue. Um, there certainly, you've made the comment, Richard, people certainly have done damage to their vehicles, especially early on, um, and as we went through trying to figure a way to problem solve this, like you said, those signs that have the slowdown, that was really the key, that was the marking we needed, the markings we had weren't effective for that use, but those really have been effective markings, and I think it really changed, now, I've seen people still go over fast too, but, I mean, you're, you could put up flashing stop signs, people are still gonna run to the stop sign, I mean, there's no, there's no, there's no fixing stupid when it comes to traffic and, you know, vehicle issues, um, and so I think that, you know, yes, it's still, it still is less comfortable.
I noticed, noticeable change the moment that you activated the flashing sign.
Yeah, me too.
I mean, and I'm there many, many times during the day, noticeable change, and I think I called you on that.
Yeah, no, I, you did, and, and like I said, it, I really haven't heard anything about this since those went out.
Another question is, are we gonna have trouble with wheelchairs or ADA compliance if we're gonna really bring that bump down?
No, you have, you have to lower the curb.
Yeah, the curb has, the curb is gonna be lowered also.
And the sidewalk has to be lowered.
Sired walk.
Well, the ramp, the ramps and curb have to be lowered to meet the grade.
To meet the grade.
You can't have a.
But it's not too steep to, uh, wheelchairs won't have trouble getting up the other side?
I think the grading will be fine.
Yeah, it's gonna be less, the, the ramps actually go up from the sidewalks to the.
Oh, they don't go the other way?
No, they go from the sidewalks up to the raised crosswalk. So this would be either flat or less.
All right, any other questions in regard to the issue?
So, so is the issue when to spend the money? Is that, is that, and out of what account to spend it from?
So if we do it now, it would be thirty-five something, and it would be out of pavement, um, and if we delay it, it could be out of free cash.
You'd have that loaded town meeting if you, if you delay it. I suppose you could delay it, take it out of pavement too. And Mark, there's also the thing of, do we need to do it? I mean, originally, we said, yes, we did, but since these improvements are in, the whole thing's changed.
So that, I mean, I don't think we need to do it, but if the board has already voted to move forward, that would be really a moot point, I would assume.
No, no, board changes this much.
So, you know, my feelings, and I, I express those in the finance committee, is, I, I think people have adjusted to it, you know, there's gonna be incidents, you know, occasionally moving forward, but I don't really think it's an issue, or at least as much of an issue as it was when it first went in. So when I, when I saw this come, come through, um, it was, um, I, I don't know that we need those improvements.
Let me, can I ask Steven one more thing, the money, the grant money that has just been awarded, can Andy swing that piece into that grant? Cause it's up for the Blueberry area.
It's not the area, it's that specific location.
Which we're talking about another raised sidewalk.
Right.
Can he cheat?
I'm not, I'm not gonna speak for him with, on that subject.
Okay, so the specific vote is for doing it right now, using pavement money, uh, whether we decide we're going to take it to town meeting, that would be another vote that someone would have to put on the floor.
Right, Marie, the, the motion had nothing to do with saying we're taking it out of pavement money, now Steven's saying he's, it's more likely that that's gonna happen, but there's, we're not compelling the, the, the town manager or anybody else in town to use that funding.
Well, that's what's gonna happen.
But let me play this out, Mark, cause, cause what you don't, you, you don't wanna say, take it out of pavement, you don't wanna be on the hook for making that decision and disrupting the pavement plan that's already programmed for the fiscal year, cause it was programmed.
Don't tell, don't put words in my mouth, I do wanna do that, but I didn't, okay? So don't put words in my mouth, Steven, cause when I put words in your mouth, you go ballistic, slam your door, and you walk out, so don't put words in my mouth. No, this is getting ridiculous, stop putting words in our mouth.
So, um, the short of it is, though, if the directive is follow the directive, then, then we reserve the right to say, we're, the best way to do this is to go to fall town meeting and then we'll get, when we get the money, we'll do the directive, that's, that's an option for us under the way that the motion is worded.
Correct.
Okay.
Well, okay, so then I would say, Richard, if you, uh, right now, it's going, coming, in my opinion, out of pavement, if you were gonna go at a fall town meeting, you'd have to modify it, I would think, because, like, I don't mind it going to town meeting, then the residents can decide, you really wanna spend thirty-five thousand dollars on lowering it two inches?
That's a good point.
Uh, but, um, so I wouldn't mind town meeting, but I don't want pavement, so that's why I say I need to know where it's coming from. So right now, the motion is to do it now, and you figure out how it's to be done, that was the motion. So all those in favor, do it right now, and they have to figure out how to get the funding.
The motion was to direct the town manager.
To do it now.
The word "now" wasn't in the motion, it was to, to lower, to, to.
Follow through.
To re-allocate the funds to lower the, the speed bump.
Okay, all right, reallocate the funds.
Jackie, what, what was the motion, cause that's, I think it was, I think it was follow the directive or something like that.
Oh, I'll figure it out later.
The follow directive of the town manager, of the.
So what was it?
To follow, to follow directive.
To follow the directive, okay, all those in favor? All those against?
I'm paying homage.
Thank you, I do this all the time, thanks. You know I can't get down and get up again, so I appreciate that. Okay, is there any other motions on the floor in regards to the bump right now?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we, we direct the, the town manager to put this on the fall town meeting more.
Is there a second to that?
I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion?
Can I make, can I?
Oh, yeah.
I think it's the best way to do it, you know, I think there, there's some uncertainty about whether we need to do it, and I think we should let the voters decide.
Okay, and when's our fall town meeting this year?
November 5th, I think.
I thought it was October this year.
I, I, it's just coming off the top of my head.
It's whatever would normally be an election year, but it's election night, but it's not, it's not an election night.
It is November, yeah.
So all those in favor? All those opposed? So let's move on to streetlights. Anything coming up on streetlights, anything happening? Should we move it right up?
Mark, you wanna?
Go ahead, this has been your.
Fine, I'll, I'll start, so the, the subcommittees, Mark Strange, myself, and Paul Msterzak, we've met a couple of times, uh, we, we've also had a, a really great, um, teleconference with the folks at the, um, with the Metropolitan Area Planning Commission, the MAPC, which were the original people that Steven spoke to about what they've done, and they, they've done a lot, and they're clearly very knowledgeable about the, the streetlight system, and, and very knowledgeable about the streetlight system. And one of the conclusions I think we've drawn is that there really are a couple of different steps left in the process. And purchasing of our streetlights is likely to be separate from the conversion of the lights once we purchase them. And so we're looking to, because we've got money to do that, move those in two separate stages. The, one of the things that the folks at MAPC indicated to us is that it's important to get what they call the consultant, which is really the, if you will, the contractor who's going to be doing this work on our behalf, who's going to be, if you will, a general contractor who's going to do a lot of the work. But it sounds like the MAPC is prepared to do a lot of this with us or for us, and, which is pretty good, because I think they're very knowledgeable.
And the purchase of the poles?
In helping advise us about the purchase of the lights and whatever it is, right. So we've also now, based on a very recent rebid by MAPC of streetlight purchases, gotten a new picture of what the next phases will cost us. And that's in terms of, there are several costs. The first cost is what we pay, in our case, Eversource for the purchase of the lights. That probably hasn't changed one bit. I'm not going to say be sarcastic, but we know it's going to go down maybe by extra depreciation or something, but it's pretty well what they've said, which is six-hundred-and-seventy-nine thousand dollars, give or take. There's also the eventual, actual purchase of the new lights, the LEDs, and installation of those. But then there's a management fee, and it's that management fee of this consultant that's of interest to me, at least, because that's what MAPC bids. You know, the conversion of the lights themselves is basically, you know, here's what the lights cost, and if you've got three-hundred watt lamps or fifty watt lamps or whatever it is, and so that's not as involved. But their new bids come in with a wide divergence of the cost of this general contractor, if you will, for managing this. And the company we dealt with so far, who had done the audit, Real Term, came in as pretty much the, if not the highest, the second highest bidder in this latest round of being the management firm, whereas others have now come in not just lower, but substantially lower.
Let's go back to, how much are we talking about purchase? Do we know what our purchase price is going to be?
It's going to be six-hundred-and-seventy-nine thousand dollars, give or take.
Six-hundred and seventy-nine?
We haven't negotiated and sat down with Northeast Utilities, or, excuse me, Eversource, but that was the last price they gave us.
And that's the first thing we have to do is buy the poles?
It's not the poles, Marie, it's the arms and the lights, okay? There are some poles that we have in our decorative lights, but what we really need to do is sit down with them and say, what's involved and what's not involved, because what people traditionally think of as telephone poles, we're not buying those. They won't sell those to us. That's not, because the poles have, you know, Eversource electric wires on it. They're not selling those to us. The poles they're selling us is the poles in the neighborhoods that have underground wiring that comes up and there's a lamp on top of it, a street lamp on top. So we've got to actually, based on the inventory we got, which was an interesting inventory relative to the...
So what's our next step? Our next step is purchase?
First step is, there's a couple of parallel steps. One is going to be to sit down with Eversource and negotiate the purchase of our lights. What are we buying and what are we not buying?
And when is that sit-down going to occur?
We don't know yet, because we need somebody to advise us on that. And the question is going to be, is it going to be the MAPC, or is it going to be one of these consultants? And if it's going to be a consultant, we may want to switch from Real Term, who we've been using, who's going to charge us a lot for this, to some other firms who charge us a lot more.
When are we going to know that? Do you have a next step deadline?
Our goal is, this week, we're going to be meeting, and we're going to be talking to a couple of those, and I hope that by the end of this week, we'll have decided which consultant we're going to go to. And I don't want to put words in anybody's mouth of where we're going to go.
Do you think you'll have it by the next meeting?
So, I don't know the answer to that.
Okay.
But I will, I would just have my two cents here. So there's two things that we need to do. The town has finished its GIS streetlight audit. The next step is to, it's actually two parallel items. One is to purchase the streetlights, and the next one is to design the lights themselves. Which you can do on a parallel basis, but you cannot do any installations until you've actually finally, you've closed on the lights from Eversource.
Yeah.
So, as we purchase the lights from Eversource, we need to send them a letter that says, yes, we are actually interested in doing this.
Okay.
It's just a very, I have a template, which is a very basic letter to send it to Eversource. Then the attorneys will get involved, and they'll generate a PNS agreement, and then that's when some of the negotiation comes in. With respect to the consultant, you know, we're not contracted with Real Term anymore, so we got, there's been a new bid, and Real Term was significantly higher than some of the other consultants. So the question now is, do we stay with Real Term, or do we switch gears and go to another consultant?
Oh, that's your subcommittee. You guys are in the know. But do you think that letter will go out to Eversource this week or next week?
I don't think we're prepared to do that until we know who's going to be in the negotiation with us, Marie. Which, we need to decide which consultant and/or MAPC is going to be in that room with us and Eversource.
But it's just, it's just a bureaucratic requirement that says...
Yeah, to get the next step going.
We'll put this paper on file that says, yes, the town of Long Meadow is interested in moving forward. If the town has voted to move forward, that's, we should do that like tomorrow, because it doesn't commit us to anything other than what we've already been committed to.
Now, we had a consultant for years, right, on this project, and is that person useful at all at this point?
George Woodburn. He is doing other work. When we reached out to him, he recommended a different outfit to help us.
Oh, he did? Okay.
Okay, well, thanks. It sounds like things are moving along.
Just so, you know, I don't know about, Mark, maybe you want to, but my conversations, that phone call we had with the MAPC, the woman at MAPC, was very enlightening. It gave me a lot of information. It gave us some good next steps forward and where we wanted to go, and I think it, you know, I think we're moving down the road here.
That's great. I'm glad to hear that. Well, we'll put you on next time agenda, too.
All right.
All right, so let's go down to fall town meeting article submission memo that gives the timelines.
Yeah, it basically gives a timeline and basically the deadlines for internal departments to get warrant articles in and citizens petitions. So, you know, again, they're not all coming in at the last minute.
And when's our, when do they have to have them in?
October 1st, so that we can have a draft warrant for you people for October 7th. Then the timeline would be, we would present the draft warrant October 7th. October 21st would be the timeframe for you to close the special town meeting warrant, and then November 5th, it gives a two-week notice for that November 5th special town meeting date.
Okay. All right, great. And we have a, any questions on that for Paul?
We don't have to adopt that, do we?
No, it's more informational. It's, you know, it's nothing to ask.
October 4th, did you say, is closing?
We would want the articles in October 1st.
First, okay.
And we would close, we would come to the select board on October 7th, I believe. Your meeting is scheduled for the 7th. We would give you a draft, and then the final warrant would have to be voted on on the 21st.
In regards to the warrant, one of the things we have to have in the fall town warrant is the easements. Do we have to deal with the easements on the north end interceptor?
I would have to ask Marv.
I think so, yeah.
I think that, and so right now, we have that, and now we have the crosswalks got to be on there. So we're starting to build that warrant already. Okay, moving on, there's a block party approval.
We approve the block party for Meadow Road between Pine Lawn and Chestnut for August 10th, 2019, with no rain.
Any discussion? All those in favor? All right, thank you. Then we have select board liaison assignments, the MMA, Scanting Valley Health Trust, Pioneer Valley Planning Commissioner, Pioneer Valley TA, Tax Sealing Task Force, the COA, what's PBC?
Permanent Building Committee.
Permanent Building Committee, that's right. And then also, yeah, I think that's it. Is there anything that anyone's interested in and wants to jump in and be on that task for, one of these assignments?
Marie, are you looking at the list that we sent?
Yeah, those are the empty ones.
These are the ones, everyone, right now, people are on these, but we can switch around. Every year, we can decide who's going to be on what. Let's start with Mass Mutual Association, Mass Municipal, okay? Are you interested in that?
Yeah.
Okay, Mark, anyone else interested in it? All right, what about Scanting Valley Health Trust? Anyone interested in that?
Well, I guess I'm still interested. I missed the last couple of meetings on it.
Well, it's up to you. You don't have to be on it. You can pick out something else you want to try it. But do you want to be on it?
Well, I'll do it if there's no other interest in it.
Okay. All right, Tom, okay, Pioneer Valley, well, Planning Commissioners, actually, we already have Walter. Is Walter Gunn still going to be that? Is everyone comfortable with Walter on there?
Is he...
Planning Commissioner?
Yeah, Planning Commissioner.
Well, he's the chair of the PVPC, but is that, I mean, what are we looking for? A liaison from the select board?
I think he's there as an elected official.
Right, that's...
He's not appointed by the, he's not appointed by the select board. He's there by virtue of being an elected planning board member.
Okay. Or you are also...
I'm the alternate.
You're the alternate, okay. All right, so what about Pioneer Valley Transit Authority that you speak, Mark?
I'd like to continue doing that.
You want to say that? Anyone else want to fight him for that? Okay, Tax Sealing Task Force?
I'll do that.
You're still interested, Mark?
A lot, but not...
Council on Aging, I'd like to keep that, if that's okay? Permanent Building Committee, are you still interested, Richard?
Sure.
I can't get that to open on my computer for some reason.
I don't see Permanent Building Committee on my list.
Yeah, I can't even get it to open.
I have it down on the, it's on the agenda.
It's on building, it's Building Committee on the list.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Anything else that you want to do?
I mean, the question, the vacancies are like the Board of Health and the Building Demolition Committee, do we need people to Goldway fund? Do we really need people to interface with those groups?
I don't think so, unless someone's really stepping forward on it. Okay, all right, so we'll move on, let's see, to the citizens petition. We received a citizens petition. My understanding is that we're supposed to do a town meeting in forty-five days, but we have to officially hand this over to the planning board. And so, even though the planning board unofficially has it, it has to come from Debbie House that the select board's handing it over to the planning board, yeah.
Okay, I'll place a motion on the table.
I think one of the things that we've talked about is, I think we ought to talk about the wording of the petition that was submitted. We've read it, and to me, they're asking for, and I'm not trying to disrupt things, I'm just trying to do what is actually said. The number of signatures they submitted, the total number, is irrelevant once they cross the threshold, whether it's ten for an annual or a hundred for, to get something on the special town meeting that we already have scheduled for the fall, or two hundred to call a unique meeting just for that purpose. Those, I think, I don't know, Jackie, a few, a couple hundred signatures? Yeah, two eighty-seven. So by my reading, they are looking for these articles to be on the special town meeting for the fall. That's the way the thing reads to me.
No. I heard Paul's comment, and that it says for a special town meeting, but the paperwork they got was attached from Kathy Ingram that was how to order a special town meeting, and they gave two hundred.
I would say, though, if you look at the box that they checked off, it also would indicate they were an article at the special town meeting.
Yeah, but that's the only options. There were only two options. One, and let me see that, because my understanding, there's only two options available, and we have constructive notice through the two hundred signatures, in my opinion, that they're looking for a special town meeting.
I agree, Marie.
I think to say, because I think we also have to turn around, and we need to change the way these are being handed out from the town clerk's office. We need to have three options available, and one is special town meeting, this fall town meeting, and a special new town meeting, I think has to be put in. Does anyone else, does anyone disagree with me and feel we should try to push it to the fall town meeting?
As a practical matter, are there consequences to interpreting it as creating a special town meeting?
Well, I would say that you could probably postpone the decision, because you're going to have time either way, until we get a complete clarification.
Have we talked to the petitioner?
Yeah, I spoke to the petitioner.
And what did they say?
They clearly wanted a special town meeting.
Yeah, they wanted a special town meeting.
Every page checks off special town meeting. I mean, it isn't...
We call the fall town meeting special town meeting, but most people don't.
Oh, I see, that's right.
The actual term is special town meeting, because we're only one town meeting a year.
I think all things equal, we should accept it.
And we have material knowledge that this is what they really wanted by the number of signatures. No one collects more signatures than they have to.
Hold on, no. The number of signatures after the threshold is not material information. Only what they write, what they want, is material information. And I don't care, I'm not going to be here on either scenario. I just want to make sure that we don't set a precedent where we're not, we're granting what we think they mean, not what they actually submitted for.
And I think we'll have to go back and clarify those records in the future, definitely. Okay, so is there a motion to move the, to inform the planning board that they must have a hearing?
So moved.
Is there a second? Any further discussion? All those in favor? All right, and if the planning board gets it, and they have to have two weeks of, so are we looking at the beginning of September?
If we have forty-five days, we are looking at the beginning of September.
Is that forty-five days? All right, so what is...
Let me see if I can...
Well, actually, it would almost be the end of August.
So seven days, seven...
Today's the fifteenth.
Seven, fourteen, twenty-one.
So fifteenth to fifteen is thirty.
It's sometime in August.
Yeah, it's late August.
How I usually do this is I usually go back to, so if you say today's the fifteenth, I'll just set an appointment.
For forty-five, oh, your computer will do it for you?
And then I'll repeat it forty-five days and go see where it ends.
Where does it end?
Repeats daily, custom.
Marie, the question's always, is it forty-five business days, forty-five calendar days?
It's forty-five calendar days.
So forty-five calendar days is the thirtieth.
So is the thirtieth going to do it, or we're illegal if we hit the thirtieth?
Hold on.
Thirty is a Tuesday, by any chance?
Yeah.
Starting from today, the forty-fifth occurrence is the twenty-eighth of August, or the twenty-ninth, you know, twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth.
And Tuesday's the twenty-seventh. August twenty-seventh is a Tuesday.
August twenty-seventh is a Tuesday.
So, but you're probably looking more towards the twentieth, because I know that they're probably going to have high gym demands, is it tryouts and things like that that week before?
Most of those are outside, though, with football.
Oh, yeah, or we'll do auditorium.
Volleyballs, well, it might be girls volleyball.
I would say auditorium, then you don't have to spend all that money laying out chairs and, yeah. I don't think we're going to have a cast of thousands.
We'll check with the high school.
Okay, so right now, we have it.
August twenty-seventh.
August twentieth.
August twentieth.
Now, if that gives, that will give the two weeks. They'll be able to do it in two weeks, but the planning board won't be too happy with that. They might have to have a special meeting to book there.
Do you want the raised crosswalk information on that special town meeting?
Sounds good to me. I'm willing to do that.
Well, I mean, sooner or later.
It's all yours, Jack. How do you, everyone feel?
Sure, that makes sense to me.
That makes sense, okay. And then we'll get more people showing up.
So can we set a date now for that?
We're doing that.
No, no, but do we have to vote to set the date, or do we have to give the town planning committee commission?
Well, I think, let's say, let's vote on whether we're going to recommend the twentieth.
Yeah, I'd recommend the twentieth. Again, we're looking for availability.
Yeah, I think we need to make it contingent upon availability of the high school.
Is there a motion to that?
I'll make a motion that the special town meeting be called for August twenty, Tuesday, August 20th, 7:00 PM, contingent upon the availability of the gymnasium or indoor auditorium, and that the select board be informed if it needs to be changed.
A second?
A second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Okay, and Richard's absent. All right, so let's see, we're moving along. I've, only thing I've skipped was town manager search. Is there anything else that I jumped over? I don't think so, okay. So town manager search, I was just going to let people know, the ad was sent out to everybody. The, there is no residency requirement, though we did really encourage people the last time to move into town. I don't know if we'll make that mistake again, because we see them all the time. But that is not in the actual ad. Let's see, the transition, I think we've already heard about and how that's going. If there's any concerns you have about specific issues in the transition, pass those along to Steven and what you feel Jay might need extra prompt on. And the, he's already contacted, everybody on the search committee has their email contacts and... including Phil, who got an email address just for the purpose of being able to be contacted, Phil Hallahan. And the first organizational meeting, he's looking for the beginning of August, and we're hoping that the interviews will be completed in August. And then it will all be handed to us in September.
Can you just comment for the people at home that, what the ad said, the deadline for submitting, people may know somebody wants to apply.
Oh, I didn't, I didn't even pick that up. When's the deadline for submitting?
I thought it was August 15th.
August 15th, okay.
And it's not to us, they submitted...
And maybe someone, a resident out there, or something?
Hey, you never know.
August 15th, yeah, it's to Bernie Lynch at Community Paradigm, right? And so that, all that contact information will be in the ad, and the ad should be up by tomorrow, I think? Yeah, I understand it was ready to go on today or tomorrow. Any further information, I get that, I'll pass on. It's 9 o'clock, and we haven't really, we've got to go back into executive session.
Yeah, I mean, it depends. If people are ready to vote, we can vote. If not, we go back into executive session.
Oh, is anyone feel, want, they want to go back into executive session to discuss?
Yeah, that was the whole point. I want to discuss the...
Okay, so we're going back to executive session to possibly reopen?
Take a vote to go into executive session.
Oh, I know, we will. But I wanted to say one thing before executive session. Hi, thank you.
CJ.